Everyone is in now, Cinda.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the North Coast Department of Education meeting tonight. The first order of our business is to call the meeting to order and to stand and salute the flag. So, meeting is open, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A motion, please, to approve tonight's agenda. Tina and John, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Motion is passed. To those of you who have just joined us, we're going to unjoin you. We do need to go into executive session first thing this evening, and then we'll be right back to do business. So, board members, I need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a specific individual. Linda and Isetta, any discussion? All in favor? A motion is carried. Tina, I'll let you take care of putting us into executive session.
Do you have an estimated time when people, when the guest should return?
Yeah, 10:00 after 6:00 should be adequate.
Okay, at this time, I'll have to ask the guests to leave and then rejoin. Or I don't, I don't think I can put you in the waiting room. Lois, can you leave the meeting? Thank you.
All right, I think, are we all out?
Yes, I believe so. I'm gonna, you'll just, I'll be back at 10:00 after, is that okay? I'm not gonna leave the meeting, I'll just mute.
You guys stop the recording. Tina, did you hit the top of your camera? Yep.
Did I do what?
We can't, your camera, it's off, up at the top.
It's on, I can see her.
Okay, I can't, so maybe my connection.
Everyone is in now.
Perfect, there you go.
Thank you. Welcome back. We're two minutes beyond the 10-minute line, so I think we did pretty well tonight. We will continue the meeting with the presentations. And, Michael, you want to start with the student presentation?
Yes, I'm actually excited that we have eighth-grade student Cara Castello with us tonight. She's actually gonna report out. We're gonna let Mr. Matthews give her the proper introduction, but we're excited to have Madeline with us tonight to hear what's going on over in our Leavenworth Building. So, Mr. Matthews, why don't you introduce Ms. Castello, please?
Good evening, everyone. Cara, are you, are you with us?
Yep, I'm right here.
Okay, is your camera working?
Yeah, sorry, I was just trying to figure out.
There you are. That's okay. Hi, Cara. Cara's a member of the class of 2026. She's got a 97.75 GPA.
Ooh.
She had perfect attendance the first quarter, she missed one day. She's doing extremely well. When I think of Cara, I think of a person who is very resilient. She's faced her share of challenges. She certainly has. And she has worked through them. So, I'm very proud to introduce her as a representative from the middle school. Here, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening. Like you said, I'm Cara Castello, and I'm an eighth-grade student at the middle school. I want to start out with thanking you and everyone else who had a part in the renovation of the middle school building. The renovation has already had a positive impact on our school community. The renovation, like, it feels so good to be in the place that we belong. During the renovation, we know that the seventh and eighth graders fell out of place at the high school, and in a way, it was like the fifth and sixth graders were stuck at the elementary school. On top of all that, along came the pandemic, which added what felt like constant unease. Being back in the new building has given us a stable home, and we're grateful to be back. Let me share the amazing news with you that the eighth-grade team has doing, has been doing great. Everyone is working together to create a positive learning experience for us, and we're working hard to make up for lost time, and every morning, teachers greet us with positivity, respect, and a fresh start. I want you to know that our teachers have been working to support our mental health, all while shouldering their own. They have created a safe and supportive place to talk about real-world problems and where we can work together to support one another. I feel like the eighth-grade team provides a safety net for us all, where we can start working to hear, heal from all of this. I want to talk about one of the major highlights that we've had this year, aside from being back in the middle school building. We want to thank Mr. Pullen for bringing Sweethearts and Heroes to our school, and Mrs. Paliotti for getting us their book for ELA classes. This year has been very challenging, but this program and the book are teaching us about giving and receiving hope. The book, Thirteen Pillows for Effective Teachers, was originally written for teachers, but it's teaching students how to be active participants in building a community that takes care of everyone. We study each concept or lesson by reading it together, reacting and reflecting and writing, and we participate in community circles where we discuss real-world examples and solutions together. I'd like to tell you how this book has inspired us to take a major role in creating solutions for many of the challenges we are facing. Our eyes are open to the importance of mental, emotional, and physical health. We have learned that all of these things are directly influenced by our environment, both physically and socially. For example, we'd like to help, oh, sorry. For example, we'd like to help make improvements to NRW by designing a student safety patrol or hall monitoring program where eighth-grade students can assist other students with anything they may need in the hall and to make sure school property isn't damaged. We'd also like to create a peer support group network where kids can volunteer to be available to talk when another student needs to vent or needs help. Basically, our biggest goal is to start taking action and making things that bother us better. These are just two of the several ideas we have so far, and we're looking forward to meeting with the eighth-grade team to bring these programs to life. And if we succeed, we can grow these programs when we go into high school. And I promise you that with the right continued support, the class of 2026 will picture the resilience by the time we graduate. Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you so much. What a wonderful report that was.
Thank you.
I'm delighted that you're happy to be in the middle school.
Yeah, thank you, definitely.
The first time the board members walked through that building when it was nearing its completion. We were just blown away and wished we could get back in that building to either be a student or teach or whatever. So, we're glad you're enjoying it and that you're also looking to take care of the building itself with your student patrol. That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think it's marvelous that you're working on building a community, and that will serve you through life. That's so wonderful. Other board members? Paul?
Yeah, Cara, Cara, you're in the eighth grade, is that correct?
Yep.
I think I want to come back to the eighth grade. What you said sounded really exciting to me, and I think, I think I'd like to join up. Also, I'd like to say that Mr. Matthews described you as resilient. That is a fantastic trait which will work well with you for the rest of your life. Good luck.
Thank you. Thanks.
Linda?
Yeah, I'd like to also say that you really have a lot of enthusiasm and commitment to what you say, which was very impressive. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Mr. Matthews?
Here, I know you were a little nervous coming in. Well, you, you really did very well. So, thank you very much, Cara. Very thoughtful and very well-spoken, very articulate, really identified a lot of very important things we're working on. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to jump in and second that because I know you have a very proud English-language arts teacher that's tuned in tonight to hear that, too. So, Ms. Ackland's jumped into the screen, and she's on the call tonight. And I know she's very proud of you as well, and I think that the work you're doing with that book is amazing. And I'm sure that Mr. Murphy, when he comes back in March, is gonna love hearing the impact that he and his program have had on you. So, I think that that's gonna be pretty amazing. So, maybe we can get him and Mr. Yarsh to give you guys a signed copy of that book. I think that that would be our treat to you guys. So, well done.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Pullen, would you like to continue with the next presentation?
Yep. So, Cara, you don't have to stick around for this unless you want to start thinking about budgeting for the future. But if not, you can enjoy your evening, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Great job, hon. All right, so yes, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Gary Barno. He's gonna be going over a budget overview with the Board of Education in our community tonight. Really pretty excited about the format that Gary's put together, and I think it's something that the board will find very similar to our budget workshop in October. So, Mr. Barno, why don't you go ahead and take over?
Okay, thank you very much. And, you know, I never like to follow up and act like that. So, she did a great job. We can go to the next slide, Tina, thanks. So, I like to start off our budget presentations with what are our district goals, right? And it's always good to remind ourselves exactly what our framework is for putting together the budget. So, this serves as a reminder that we hold ourselves accountable for responsible management of the funds that align our priorities and, as well as transparent communication about those funds. So, along with the district goals, next slide, please. We want to present our budget goals and our budget guidelines together. So, these are some of our major budget goals here. It's always, of course, to minimize our budget-to-budget increase and keep our tax rates below that 2% cap, stay within that tax cap limit. Our goal is to maintain or enhance our program. So, that's what we're, we're all about. This is the financial interpretation, basically, of our instructional goals. We're looking to maintain our bus replacement schedule. You'll hear more about that in future presentations. And to continue with our capital outlay projects, very important for our district. Next slide, please. Okay, budget guidelines to be aligned with our board goals, both, and be both educationally and fiscally sound. We're there now, we want to continue, and we want to improve that. The budget shall reflect prudent financial planning, balancing the needs for all students, instructional goals, improved technology, and facilities while minimizing the impact to taxpayers. So, I put these up, basically, these district goals and budget goals and guidelines, pretty much for each of the presentations. I won't read them verbatim like I just did at each presentation, but it does serve as a good reminder of the framework that we're working with. And by the way, these presentations will be posted on our district website, and you will be getting a budget presentation with each of our board meetings between now and, and our vote in May. So, okay, next slide, please. So, all these presentations will be taking into account these following budget factors. These factors, we provided the board with quite a bit of detail on back in October. So, you'll, you'll find that, that our future presentations will provide a lot more detail in each of these areas going forward. Okay? Next slide. Thank you. So, what I want to point out here is that this is a teamwork process, okay? And we started this process in November officially with council meeting. So, it's not just Superintendent Pullen and myself coming up with some numbers. We're working as a team to put this budget together. So, it is the district office administrator, administrative team. It's all of our building administrators and our directors. So, this is, lays out a timeline for that process. And that'll, that'll go into March and, and beyond, right into April, when we have a finalized budget. Gives you an idea of how we come together as a team to present a responsible, balanced, and a sound, sound budget, okay? Next slide, please. Okay, just a couple of slides on, on presenting a balanced budget and the, and the big factors here. Taking a look at the revenue picture, the two big factors are state aid and our tax revenue. So, as of this point, January 13th, we do not have our state aid runs. They typically come right after the governor's address to the state. This year, I think she presented her State of the Union address a little bit earlier than we've seen in the past. And so, those state aid runs for us, which are going to help us formulate the revenue side of our budget, we expect those to come out next week, the week of the 18th. That's what we've heard. So, that'll be a very important factor for us going forward, and in our next presentation, we can give you an update on, on that. Okay, the other major piece of the revenue pie, if you will, is our estimated tax levy. We anticipate going to the 2% tax cap. We're going to really need to do that, particularly this year. I think everyone's been listening to the news and thinking about the inflationary factors that are, that are, that we're all facing. So, the rule here in our tax levy is that we have to go with the lower of the 2% tax cap limit or the CPI average over the last year. Right now, that CPI, the Consumer Price Index, is about four and a half percent. So, but we're only limited to collecting up to about 2% of the current year's tax levy. So, there are exclusions to that. It's not always exactly 2%. So, that calculation is done over the next couple of months as we get more information. But we can plan on about 2% growth in our tax levy. That is, does not mean that the tax rate will go up the same amount. Generally, the, the tax rate is a little bit lower because of changes to assessments and so forth, and other revenue factors. So, you know, a rate of inflation that is four and a half percent really does highlight the challenge of capping that tax rate. Next slide, please. Then on the expense side of the budget, we are taking a look at, among other things, but, but the major cost drivers, I always point out, are salaries. Salaries and benefits are 60% of our budget. It's really what drives the changes. And while salaries, we can control somewhat salary increases through negotiations. There are many things that are out of our control, in particular, the retirement rates and health insurance rates from year to year. That, that can be very, very volatile. So, taking a look at our retirement rates, the employees' retirement system or ERS from projected for next year, there's really not a lot of change in that rate. So, we don't expect much of an impact there on our budget. However, the teachers' retirement system, which is a much larger number in our, our budget, that rate, which is currently at 9.8%, is now estimated at this point to go, to increase by to 10% or 10 and a half percent. Now, going from 9.8 to 10 doesn't sound like a lot, but it is a two, that would be a 2% increase. And if it goes to 10 and a half percent, that's a 7% increase on the budget. So, so that is, by the way, significant. At the low end, we're talking on that line item alone, $20,000. At the high end, we're talking about $70,000 increase to that line item. Also, health insurance rates can be very volatile, right? And I don't have good news for, for us tonight on the health insurance rates. We have had some early information that these rates were going to spike for this next year, up to estimating about 25% increase in the health insurance rate. That is a very, very large number and presents our biggest challenge with this budget this year. So, the latest information, and those rates are not final yet, that that 25% increase may, may be closer to 22 or 23%. Right around there, but we should be getting information on that final rate over the next two weeks. So, those are some of the challenges, right? The revenue picture and the, these major cost drivers on the expense side, okay? So, what do we do? How do we approach the budget? A balanced budget. We know that we, we have to have the voters approve the appropriation side or the expense side of the budget, but it has to be balanced by, by our revenues, right? So, on one, one side, you've got a set of revenues. On the other side, a set of expenditures. We need to bring the budget into balance, and we do that now with our options here. By one, right now, taking a look at what the state aid picture is going to look like. And right now, I'm projecting between two and a half, 3%. Hopefully, when we get our runs, it will be a little bit more than that. So, we're crossing our fingers on additional state aid. Okay, what else can we do? We can appropriate additional fund balance. The current year, there was zero amount appropriated for, for, towards the budget. The prior year before that, the district appropriated $250,000. So, we're, we're gonna take a look at, at what, if any amount, we want to appropriate out of fund balance. And that'll be determined as, as we go along in the budget process, we get close to the year end, and take a look at our, our fund balance projections as they tighten up. Okay, so, we can also take a look at how we help balance the budget by applying our reserve funds. Currently, we apply about $440,000 from, I think it's four different reserves, four or five different reserves, totaling that amount to help balance our budget, right? So, we take a look at our reserve funds to help us out there. We may be looking at reducing our, our budget for supplies and equipment all, all across the board. If we have to do a little belt tightening, we want to keep cuts as far away from the instructional program as possible. So, that, that is one area where we have some discretion on our spending, and we can do some belt tightening. We are looking at some savings, hopefully, through some retirement as our older teachers retire, and we hire younger ones at a, at a lower cost. We call that the breakage, right? Or that's really a savings for us. So, we'll be taking a look at that. And then lastly, we do review our, our total staffing needs, both instructional and non-instructional, and, and also at our programs. So, although we, we're not anticipating, we don't have any program reductions targeted or anything, we do a review of these things just to make sure we're still getting our bang for, for a buck with all of these programs. Okay? Our next slide. I will end up all of these budget presentations with a budget timeline. It's really important for us to be aware of when these big-ticket items happen and make sure that we're on track. So, that by the time the, the board adopts its, this budget on April 14th, that's right on our budget calendar, you will be ready, and we, we will have no surprises with this budget, right? In fact, after the state budget hopefully is passed, it is due on April 1st. And over the last several years, the budget has been on time. But we will present the board with, with a final version of the budget on April 7th. And then the board can be ready to adopt the budget on the following week. And then, of course, May 6th is the budget hearing, and where the public can listen to the presentation, get a much more in-depth view of the budget. The budget will be presented in a variety of different ways. There's public mandatory or required budget documents that help make it very clear and plain language for our voters. And that's what we intend, tend to do. And then, in anticipation of a successful vote on May 17th, okay? And next slide, please. So, what are we doing? We're, we're trying to do what's, what's right for children. That's, that's why we're here. So, I'd like to end, end the presentation with that slide. And I do want to thank Amanda Franco for helping out with these pictures and, and presentation. Okay, so, do we have any questions?
Paul?
Yes, sir, on budget factors on the sales tax. I, I think that, that was a big concern a couple of months ago. That's, that's dissipated, hasn't it? They didn't, they didn't change the sales tax. Is that right?
Have not had a discussion on it since, since they brought it forward in the fall, and we're not certain whether it's still a topic of discussion or not, but it's gone pretty quiet. But it is something we're, we're continuing to monitor because if they withheld that sales tax from our particular school district, we'd be forfeiting about $453,000 that the county would take back. So, that's a quite, quite an impact. So, it's something that if our County Board of Supervisors did move forward with, it would have a detrimental effect on our district. You're, you're correct.
The good news, I was going to say, the good news there is that it has been, been quiet. And at this point, it is getting, I think, late, late in the game for them to make a change. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed. No news is good news there.
And then, I would just ask that going forward, too, could we weave in, I think it's called ESSA, that extra money that the federal government gave to the districts?
That's not part of the funding for, for the appropriation. So, that, that would be accounted for in our special aid fund, but, but is not used to, as a revenue source in the general fund.
Okay, good. I know it had a lot of stipulations about it, too. So, thank you.
John?
Gary, what is, on the revenue side, you had CPI and then a dash U. What does that stand for?
The Consumer Price Index and...
Well, the U part of it, I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, I think that's, I'm not sure exactly, but it's an estimated amount, I know. It's not, doesn't stand for estimated, but this is probably unofficial, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that could have been taken out of there.
I was grateful that you said something about the inflation rate because I've been following the Fed. And last year, they said, basically, they were only gonna raise the rates maybe twice, the summer and next fall. And now, just recently, this last week, they're up to four now, rate increases, because... Because the inflation's going crazy. So a person in your place, how in heaven's name do you estimate a budget? When inflation is going crazy like that? And even the Fed is, um, mixing up what they're doing. Terrible.
It, it, that is a, a tough challenge and a, and a good question, thanks. Um, so we already know, um, some, some of the things such as fuel costs, uh, has gone up by so much. That factors into this in- inflation, right? The seat, the, uh, the, the Consumer Price Index increase. So, uh, where we can identify, um, those rising costs such as fuel, we, uh, make adjustments. And I've done that al- al- already. And, uh, you know, we have, we have some significant increases in our fuel line items of the budget.
Good, thank you. I also, uh, is grateful that you put in there, uh, our healthy reserves. Because one of the virtues of this school district is that we do have a healthy reserves. Uh, and, and I mean healthy in the respect that they're useful for what we use them for. And I'd like to see if, if there's money available that's some monies go into those reserves to help strengthen us for the future years. I think it's critical. Thank you.
Uh, another great point, and you will see a lot more, uh, in a, in my presentations, a lot more, uh, around the reserves and how we use those. They are an important long-term tool for, for, for our budget planning purposes. And, um, so we'll be talking about the reserves a lot.
Thank you. Very clear, thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Gary. That was very clear and I, I hope it gives, uh, the public, uh, a good idea where we're headed, uh, as this budget process proceeds. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will continue with, um, reports and correspondence. And, um, I believe, Michael, do you want to introduce the, uh, the directors?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. So tonight with us, Jeremy Barnes, Bill Bonville, Lisa Brower and Rita Lopez are gonna present their update for their school improvement plan. You know how critical these people are to our day-to-day operation. So we're pleased to have all of them with you tonight and have them present to you. You know, and a day like Tuesday, when we're dealing with those, uh, freezing temperatures, you know, they really come together to provide our students with safe transportation and a warm hot meal when they get here, um, parking lots that are clear, sidewalks that are salted and technology that's up and running for, you know, all purposes. So we're really excited with the team of people that are gonna present to you tonight. Really looking forward to their presentation so you can hear the updates, uh, what they've been able to do with, uh, the support of our public. And I'm gonna turn it over to Jeremy Barnes to get it started for us. So, welcome to our directors.
Thank you, Mr. Pullen. Um, and, uh, kind of piggybacking off what he said, you know, us as the directors, um, kind of think of ourselves as the cogs of the wheel, really. Um, the behind-the-scenes portion that there are so many moving parts to our district. Um, and the, you know, the, the support staff, uh, in keeping them moving forward with every position of the district. So we, as the directors, are thrilled that the Board of Education and the community, basically invited us here to give our school improvement plan and, um, kind of show where we started out at the beginning of the year and where we've come, um, thus far. There's been a lot of great things that have happened this school year. Um, and just hoping to move forward from here and, and continue to grow as a community and as a district. So, if we could with the first slide, Tina? Yeah, so for transportation, um, our partnership, we wanna work collaboratively with families and school staff to keep up-to-date transportation information as well as a strong line of communication. You see in the top right-hand corner, um, is our school tool, our student information system. We worked with the, uh, technology department to, um, kind of bridge between the routing software and the, um, student information software to give teachers the opportunity to look within the student information system to see what bus a student rides on any particular day. Um, there's an AM and PM bus number for each day of the week so they can be savvy too as to what bus the students ride in, in, on any given day if there's a change. Um, and also we wanted to work, um, with the building administrators to, to keep up-to-date information with the families. You know, if there's an issue on the bus or, or a disciplinary issue, to work with the admin team to make timely phone calls and that type of thing. And that really has worked out well, um, this school year. I've worked with each one of the administrators and, and, you know, been able to follow through and follow up with any issues or concerns that parents have had. Um, the second goal was equity. Um, we wanna treat staff and students with the dignity that they deserve while embracing their diversity. I pounded into, to my staff's head this year, um, drivers and monitors, that each day is a new day. Bobby or Susie may have had a bad day today, for whatever reason it may be. Um, let's leave that behind and, and start fresh tomorrow. And that approach has really worked well with the students. To, to, um, you know, become, get a positive attitude and a positive outlook on their transportation. And, and providing ongoing, um, professional development for the staff in the district. Uh, it's kind of twofold. Uh, New York State Education Department has recognized this diversity as well and has incorporated, um, some diversity training into their mandatory, uh, two refreshers a year, one in the fall and one in the spring. So the drivers and monitors will have some diversity training, um, within the State Education Department outlook, um, coming up this spring. Next slide, please. And then again, with the, um, providing staff with training needed to be successful in dealing with students with social emotional needs. Um, there's a professional development day coming up in March, uh, where Mrs. Ballyadi and, and Mr. Pullen, have graciously given us the time to be able to continue our training and, um, you know, to, to be better at diversity and dealing with students' social emotional needs. And then, you know, we continue to provide an on-time ride for all students. Uh, student-centered approach to transportation, we've really knuckled down on that this year. And, and recognizing that the, you know, the student is the exact reason that we're here. And maybe it's an inconvenience for any one of our departments, but at the same time, the best and safest place for the student is at school. Uh, so we work hard to get them there on any given day and e- even go above and beyond when needed to get the student to school. Um, and then teaching the Cougar values that we came up with over the summer in our workshop group. We taught the Cougar values to the, our youngest students, pre-K through four. Uh, within the first week of school, uh, each classroom came out and got on the bus. I was able to participate in that. And just go over our Cougar values, you know, being courageous, optimistic, understanding, grateful, uh, adapt and be respectful. And showing the students what that looks like on the school bus. Uh, I think that was great. The students really were receptive to that. Unfortunately, the weather was not the best those couple days. It seemed to downpour every time a new class wanted to come out. But we made it through and, and even teach some, you know, some crossing procedures and those types of things to keep our youngest students safe when crossing in front of the school bus. And lastly is our financial aspect that we w- work very hard every day at, at researching and making sure that we come up with the best, uh, price for the products that we're purchasing and, and just being money savvy. Making sure that we're spending it wisely. Bill, if you're ready?
Sorry about that, I was muted. Good evening for facilities, working with other department heads, uh, developing a strong line of communication. Uh, we started creating a, uh, living Google document to get, uh, tasks to everybody and where we're at with them, uh, for facilities. Uh, also working as a team within our, our department. Uh, we hold a, a morning meeting in maintenance. We discuss a prioritized task for every day. Another goal for equity. Creating a one and three and five-year plan. Part of our one-year plan is, uh, having a equipment inventory. See where everything is, the life expectancy is, and making sure the PMs are done in a proficient manner. Uh, providing professional development for staff through training. Uh, two of our vendors, Hilliard and Day Automation, have, have came to the district or allowed us to have a day training with them. Uh, Hilliard gave, uh, training in the elementary school on equipment and chemicals. Uh, Day Automation has a whole day training on the new, um, climate control system there at the middle school. Another goal for social emotion. Being able to problem solve with constant results, uh, having scenarios that we work through in maintenance. Trying to give our maintenance team as much information as we possibly can so they can make decisions on the fly. Another goal for academics. We try to create a warm welcome and safe environment. Well-mannered grounds. We brought, just brought on a new individual, showing some real promise. He has a degree in, uh, turf management. Uh, he really has an eye for, uh, curb appeal. We try to quickly create a clean and well-lit classroom environment. Making sure all exterior access points are secure, uh, for financial. Expanding on a preventive maintenance practices. Training with staff from other in-house staff members, uh, just recently. Uh, our senior mechanic had, had shown a couple of the new guys how to change a ball bearing. Sorry, not a ball bearing. A bearing on our, uh, salter that went down on Tuesday. Got it working, got it fixed within a couple hours. It was great to see our team come together. Using a work order system to create a iron clad preventative maintenance schedule. Uh, creating a better stock of building products and becoming more efficient in tasks and utilizing a better competitive buying practices. Next slide, please. Thanks.
Hi, uh, for food services, part, part of our partnership goals, we're working with faculty, staff and the students to provide cafeteria services. Uh, so far, we've baked off 924 cookies. They were decorated for student activities for the holiday tea as well as the after-school discovery program. We've also provided 74 meals for fall athletics. And we have, um, we'll be starting to work on 160 meals throughout the winter athletics program. Uh, we're also working with the For You Friday with the faculty and staff to, um, uh, use like health and wellness and get them healthy snacks for their program on Fridays. Um, we're working on, with the support and provide materials to ensure all students know the importance of a well-balanced meal with the support of faculty and staff at all building levels. For equity, uh, our goal is by providing quality meals to all students, faculty, staff in the district. We're gonna ensure all students across the districts are receiving the same quality meals as well as choices that meet their taste. Um, as one thing that we've already done, um, as classes have been moved to virtual learning this year, we have already produced over 2,500 meals to ensure those students are receiving a nutritional meal for both breakfast and lunch, just as if they were receiving it in the cafeteria in the individual buildings. And we're supporting cafeteria staff to provide all the necessary tools to produce quality meals. We're providing ongoing training for all the staff. I actually just got word that, um, Bosse's is working with a bunch of the other school districts. And we're going to be scheduling in August a serve-safe, um, exam for them for their health and safety and sanitation. And we've also renewed the School Nutrition Association memberships for all of the staff this year. So that way they can work on getting their credits, um, to work on trainings and any updates to meeting different, um, changes in the crediting of food. So that way all the staff is on the same page, knowing where we're going. Uh, next slide. For social emotional, we're gonna continue moving breakfast out of the cafeteria and into the classroom, making it part of the school day to break the stigma associated with the program. So far, we've increased the number of breakfast by 50% in the high school, 25% in the middle school. And currently, 350 out of 387 students in the elementary school eat breakfast. We want to try and involve students in the planning of menus. We encourage positive interactions between cafeteria staff with all the students during their time in the cafeteria to model social interactions and mealtime conversations. We just had, before the Christmas break, we had some Christmas elves that came in to work with the staff. And, um, they actually really enjoyed it and the staff was really, uh, grateful to get to work with some of the seniors, you know, getting to know the cafeteria. Uh, as far as our academic goals, each student will have access to a full, balanced and healthy meal to give students fuel to perform better academically and behaviorally. And then providing continuous training to all cafeteria staff to help them grow with their skills and knowledge through the training. And like I mentioned before, serve-safe, everybody's gonna get set up to, uh, take the class and the exam. And we're also providing training material to faculty, staff and students, aiding in the importance of nutrition and the effects it has to perform academically and behaviorally. And to establish support, um, establish support at all building levels. And on to the next slide. For financial, we're looking to operate in a fiscally responsible manner. Operate in a fiscally responsible manner, supported by our revenues and federal, from federal and state reimbursements. And I just got an email today that, um, if any school district is operating in the seamless summer option, which we operate in that because it is the highest rate, uh, for federal and state reimbursements. Starting January 1st, they just increased them by eight percent. So our reimbursement rates will go up for the remainder of the year, operating under seamless summer option. And then using our commodities to the greatest extent possible. We're, I'm creating menus based on the commodity foods that we come in and when they're received. And then putting processes in place for accountability of billing of invoices through catering. All invoices that are sent out to be paid are logged with a confirmation of our treasurer's receipt number as well as marked as being paid. To make sure that everybody is held accountable to paying all the invoices.
Lisa, you're all set to jump in?
She's having troubles unmuting on me.
Lisa, you may be able to unshare, unmute and then reshare. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Sorry about that. So, for technology, uh, the number one goal for partnership is to continue to facilitate the support and communication with the staff, students and community. Number one, we are incorporating and support the new district-wide communication software, Parent Square. Uh, we continue to support and make adjustments to Parent Square. The usage has increased as users become more comfortable with the program and it really has become the go-to for communication district-wide and with the community. The second, renumbering and configuring of all district-wide extensions. This was complete in the fall. Uh, we aligned all of the extensions with the room numbers, which allowed for uniformity throughout the whole district. We enhance relationships with students and staff and community through open tech days. The technology department would like to continue the open tech days beginning in February. We feel that this would be beneficial. This was beneficial in the past for all students, staff and parents, and we'd like to continue with this. Participate in student and building open house dates. Uh, a staff member from the technology department was present at each of the building's open house. And we felt that this was very beneficial. And we felt that this was very beneficial for answering questions. And it allowed us to hand out materials for Parent Square how-tos and we hope to continue this in the future. Increase technology department footprint in each building. We've added a new position in the tech department and this is allowing us to be present in the buildings more often and provide better service for the district. We are very thankful for this addition. The number two goal equity, to create an environment where every user is assured the availability of technology for all learning initiatives. Oops, sorry. Support the use of data-driven applications which staff can use to gain insights and help make effective and informed decisions. And support the staff in professional development, which will empower them to use technology in a personalized learning environment. Applications such as Panorama, Ames Web, Google Classroom, all require integration with other applications and with our our student information system. This requires multiple layers of technology support. And it's to help make these applications work seamlessly through all aspects of our data, student data. Number three, social emotional, provide support for social emotional learning through the use of technology tools. Support and maintain the use of district software, Panorama. Support new initiatives such as esports. And as I mentioned above, we provide a necessary piece in making this technology work for staff and students. Number four, academic, to support the use of technology that will create an individual and enhanced learning experience for each student. To support and maintain district network and wireless network. Support and maintain all district software and ensure all devices, hardware and software updated as needed. And to support and maintain classroom management applications such as Google Classroom. I recently met with our Bosse support team to review our network and to plan for our future needs. We are currently in good shape with our network and the hardware is up to date with all necessary updates and security patches. And this is continually assessed by Bosse's and our technology department. Fifth and final, financial. So we want to continue the review of all district software and continue to build upon a comprehensive technology replacement plan. Also research strategies and upcoming technology. That will improve and support instructional and instructional initiatives and then keep cyber security as a continued priority. And this is done by continued assessment and monitoring of all systems and procedures which include an incident response plan and a disaster response plan. And that concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Lisa, I know you mentioned it and you said they were going to be continuing in February, the open tech days. I'm not sure I understand what what that involves.
So last year during, I believe it was during COVID, we, we did, I believe it was Wednesdays. And we did a time period that we provided to the students and parents that they could come to school and they could bring their Chromebooks in and we would fix them or if they had questions on any of the programs that the students were using on the Chromebooks at home. That was all new for the parent, for a lot of parents. And so it was very helpful for them that we could show them how to use the Chromebook and how to use the certain programs that the students were using. The students knew how to use them, but the parents didn't. So it was very helpful.
I can imagine they really appreciated that help. Thank you.
Dan?
Well, thank you. It was a great presentation. I having been in the buildings myself years ago. All of you have an integral part in dealing with our kids and educating our kids and from stem to stern, from the morning you get them, pick them up to the time you take them home. I love the emphasis on the future of the kids and what we're doing for your individual departments. And also I was thrilled to hear about how you communicate with each other within your department with the goal of making the future better. So congratulations, great presentation.
Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I have three questions, not questions, but at least for Rita on food service. We have the meals for athletes. Rita, is that for our athletes or is it the opposing team athletes? Just can you expand on that a little bit, please?
It's actually for our athletes. I know, Mark, you could probably add in on this, but any of the teams that I believe are traveling. Mark has communicated with me and let me know how many athletics he has traveling that need a meal. So that way at least they're getting something to be fueled up to head to these games or like I said, Mark would probably, I'm not sure if they're eating them before the games or after the games. So but we're providing meals for them whenever he needs them.
Okay, good. Thanks. My second one was involving the students in the planning of menus. I applaud that. I love it when we involve our students. Could you elaborate just a bit on how how we intend to do that?
Well, right now, as far as the elementary, our servers on the line, Richard Lewis, Casey Ferguson, and Arlene Purse. They're always interacting with them, asking them what they think, you know, a thumbs up, thumbs down. You know what their favorite choices are. And we do it at the high school, too. We've been introducing them new menu items. We recently started doing a Cuban sandwich. We've taken some of our commodities that have been these pepper jack, ciabatta melts. And we've tuned them up a notch by adding our pulled pork commodity that we get called carnitas. Adding it to it, putting pickles on there, giving it a little twist because some of the products that come in that are commodities. They can be boring, but I think when they're turned up a little notch, it gives them a different you know, look on the item instead of just the plain, you know, pulled pork sandwich or just a chicken patty. Well, let's make it a Cuban or let's make it a chicken court on blue. So that way they just get something different.
Great. My last one is actually a comment or maybe even a recommendation. With providing, so I'm looking at the bullet that says provide training material to faculty, staff, students and importance of nutrition and effects on academic and behavioral performance. I think Mark still wouldn't hear. Hey, also athletics, it really helps to perform on the field or on or on the gym floor, wherever it is. And body strength, it just becomes important, especially in the high school arena and some of these are very, very active sports. So keep, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have a question for Lisa. May I continue?
Yeah.
Lisa, I remember we were, so my question really, and it's all about high-speed internet. I see we got eight million dollars in Wayne County for high-speed internet. I hope we don't do another study because it seemed like we studied it at Infinitum. My question is, are we still using about two hundred and fifty hotspots?
We have about, I would say about a hundred and sixty hotspots out, so it's not quite as high as it was. We did get some of them back, so I believe some families are starting to gain on that, on that front and starting to get some, some connectivity. But I think we still have a ways to go out here.
Okay, well, with the hotspot, does that actually give pretty good high-speed internet?
It does, but it also depends on cell towers. So you, you're dependent on if you have coverage there or not. And if you don't, then you're gonna, you're gonna run into issues with that. So I think, I think for the most part, our families are are covered as much as we can provide coverage for them.
Okay, thank you. And thanks to all the directors. Appreciate the presentation.
Yes, thank you. I enjoyed hearing all the details and all the things that you've done and are doing and hope to do. I did recall a time that you did provide some meals for a team that was, an away team that was here and had a long trip home. Can't stop to the McDonald's anymore, that kind of thing. And we provided, you provided that for them and they were blown away as I recall hearing. Is that right, Michael? Is that what you told us?
Is it something that, you know, if you were to look back over the last two years when we started really making sure that our student athletes and after-school programs had a nutritious snack and a well-balanced meal, that is something that we we extended to a few teams. And in fact, you know, Christina and her crew last year in particular around Valentine's Day. Not only did they provide the opposing team with a meal, they also wrote them little Valentine's cards and wished them well in the contest, even though they were still rooting for our Cougars to come out on top. So man, I think that when we, we talk about what we're trying to model daily with our students and the directors are an integral part, as we stated earlier. You know, spreading a little goodwill and providing kids with a nutritious meal when they're on an opposing team is something that we take pride in as well because we really do understand we're all in it together. So for us, if we know cafeterias are, are limited and stops due to COVID are obsolete. We wanted to make sure those kids were fed as well. So yes, the food service team has done a fantastic job with that.
Yes, and I also wanted to compliment the the addition of the extra person at the transportation level and at the tech level that helps communicate with parents beyond the school day. So if a child comes home or doesn't come home, a parent can call in and get a real person and talk to a real person and get some help. I think that's a very, very positive thing. So thank you. Thank you for all you're doing and great, great report and it's good to hear. Thank you.
If you don't mind, can we dismiss the administrators and directors that let them get on with their evening, just knowing that tomorrow we're talking about a little bit of inclement weather coming in. Let them get a start with their families because we know that this week earlier, they all had to adjust their, their schedule quite a bit.
Good night, all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move, we'll move on with our board liaisons, starting with Isetta, our elementary liaison. Isetta?
Unfortunately, I've had quite the week. I was unable to communicate with Mrs. Christie this week, but I do know the kids have been very busy, very excited to be back and I'd see that on a personal basis, but I haven't had a chance to talk with Christie at all this, this month.
Yeah, it's been a busy week for everyone.
It has.
John, did you, were you able to connect?
Yes, I was. The middle school is doing a student council penny war. And they're doing it by grade level and the class that, you know, it's a competition between each class and whoever wins, they donate the money, everyone to student council. And the student council will determine a charity to give it to. So it's a, it's a good human type thing to do, humane type thing to do. Also, the student council gets the experience of finding out what charities are available and which one to give it to. I think it's a great overall campaign. The other is the kids, I'm sure won't especially care for this one. The pennies are easy. But they're going to be doing midterms, actual exams in ELA math, science, social studies and foreign language midterm exam. Mark said in seventh grade is going to be between forty-five minutes and sixty minutes. And eighth grade, sixty minutes to seventy-five minutes. And that's in preparation for getting the kids ready to take exams. Because in virtual life, we probably didn't give too many of them. And next year in the high school, they'll be getting exams in normal years, I'm hoping. But even now, they should be, they, meaning the students, should be aware of how to pace themselves, how to take exams, how to read the questions. There's a whole science to getting prepared to take exams, which are critical to graduate. And if they wanted, it doesn't matter if they want the military or they want academics, college. Exams are a major part of their life as it is for all of us. Especially when we do IRS in April for us. They're also going to do a recognition assembly at the end of the month for students who demonstrate and understand caring and accepting differences, making mistakes and improving and listening in classes to teachers and to others. So I think it's a, it's a, it sounds like a busy, busy month in the month of January for the middle school.
Linda, were you able to connect to the high school? Yes, I was. I was able to connect, but it had to be by phone because of some delay in my travel back home. And I did connect in that, like the middle school, the high school was doing midterm examinations from the twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth, the end of the first semester. This year, in the new year, the students were really glad to be back. And prior to the break, the last day before the break, there were treats and cookies, tea and cookies taken to the room. So on that last day, they did a lot of different activities to enjoy each other and prepare for the holidays. And they also had a celebration assembly on that last day before vacation. So that's, that's in the Reader's Digest version of what, what went on and there'll be more to come next month. Great, great. Glad to hear people are having some fun and enjoying each other. Linda, do you have anything to report from Fort County? Well, actually I did ask and I know Tina forwarded to you, I was not able to attend the legislative committee meeting last week again because of travel. But we have been working on the state proposals of what the priorities are. We've been kind of, we've been aligning that with superintendent's priorities as well. And then the federal proposals were developed, so they're ready to go forward to let all the people that are in charge, let us just latively know what's important to us and what we need to see for our students. So when you get a chance, take a look at those. Yeah. Okay. And I would add for Fort County. Coming up on January twenty-fourth, board members. There is a, a general membership meeting that, and Dr. Rick, Rick Timms is going to be the speaker. He's going to be speaking on statewide on advocacy for public school districts. He, he is the executive director of the statewide school finance consortium. And I think you probably all had some connection to Dr. Timms at one point or another in the, in the district. So if you want to zoom in for that, why don't you let Tina know? And she will contact Sue and get, get the link sent to us, okay? All right, the handbook committee met yesterday and, and actually has completed its task and we look forward to it's taken all, all last semester. We look forward to presenting it to you and I'll get, I'll get information to you about that as after I've had some contact with scheduling with Michael. Policy committee, Paul?
Yes. We're going to meet on the 18th. We've been bogged down over the holidays. We've got a lot of work to do. And, you know, on one hand, I'm on the handbook committee and the other one, I'm on the policy committee and the handbook committee has made a recommendation to the policy committee that we take another look at 1510. So somehow tonight, Cindy, we need to pull 1510 off the, the agenda.
Tina, did you pull that already?
Yes, it's not included in for the approval. It's still in the first recess date.
Great. And so I, I mean, I kind of made a commitment to the board to not gag you with a whole bunch of policies at one time. However, I may need to renege on that for next month because we got some big ones coming and where they're important and we need to get them out. So stand by.
So the, what was it? What was the number? 15, 2015 or?
1510.
1510, oh. Good thing I'm not doing the budget, huh? The 1510 was a second read for tonight. So going back to policy, it will come back to us as a second read at our next board meeting. Unless there's some reason that the policy committee is unable to meet, but that's what we anticipate. And Izetta, the audit committee?
Yes, they met and it was very, very good meeting. They talked about the student council in that middle school addressing the fact that they need to pay sales tax. Not necessarily that the students have a problem knowing and not knowing, but sometimes the vendors don't know. They assume they're dealing with a school, there's no tax and the students have to pay tax on their projects. So they're going to talk a little bit more with the students and the staff on how to address that issue, make sure that that does happen. They also talked about recording of financial activities in the, you know, like the library club and things like that. And each, each activity, learning to do their own profit and losses for each activity that they do so that they know that they are, whether there was profitable for them, whether maybe they are look at something else or how they need to revamp it to make it a little more profitable for them and make their their exercise a positive one. I talked about vendors and a little more screening on vendors, especially when you look at how this, the, the state and the government does their, their purchasing and how they screen for family versus outside vendors and how you work that so the families do, are able to work with the students if they wish to through their business, but yet it is competitive for all the businesses that nobody has, has a guarantee because Joe Blow's sister over here works with, Cindy Lou's sister over here. They, they working at, looking at how to meet their vendor needs in a positive way so that everyone, everyone has a, has the right to compete and be successful. Some of that may be, maybe looking at two vendors instead of just one or three. They talked about getting with the staff and helping them a little bit more with how to help the the students in their recording of their activities and things like activities that maybe aren't being used anymore, but will or won't be in the future. And what happens with, if there's money there, will it be used? Will it not be used? What do they do with it? And some activities like the yearbook last year came up with a negative balance. How does that happen? Well, with last year as it was, it wasn't hard. But they're looking at how to improve that process and how the vendors have some ideas too and how to make that a process so that that doesn't happen for the school or the business. But all in all, it was a very good meeting and the committee recommends that the reports be accepted.
Thank you. That completes reports and correspondence. At this time, it's a time the board sets aside to give the public access to us, to talk to us. Tina, is there anyone who has signed up to do that tonight?
I did not have anyone reach out.
All right, thank you. All right. We move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda goes through page four. A motion please to approve the consent agenda. And Tina, oops, sorry, Paul. Catch you next time. Discussion, questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Unanimous vote, it is carried.
Cindy?
Yes.
I couldn't get my button pushed in time. Number, number nine, I think is a wonderful thing. It has to do with the additional basketball coach being appointed for seventh grade. I think it's wonderful that our district is one of the very few that I think has full teams. And adding a basketball coach or team to the middle school is a great thing. It gives the seventh grade girls a chance to play together and the eighth grade together. And that's a great thing for our sports program in the future. And I understand that the boys had the similar experience. I think it's a real, real positive for our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. We move on now to the policies. You will note there are three policies, not four. And I will entertain a motion to approve the policies. This is a second read, therefore the board is going to approve them. Motion please.
I think they did pull 1510.
What'd you say?
I think they wanted to pull 1510 this, this week. Wasn't that right, Paul?
It was.
It was called. You should have gotten the new agenda and updated agenda.
I'm sorry, yes, there's only.
I'm going by the old agenda.
Thank you, me too. And there's two, two policies. Okay, a motion to approve the two policies. Number 3220 and number 5633. Motion? Linda? Tina? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried by unanimous consent. We move now to number seven. This is the bond resolution for the capital project improvement plan. Is there a motion please to approve this? Paul and John? Is there discussion? All right, Tina, I think, is this a roll call vote?
Yes.
Oh, I remembered at last.
Cindy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Izetta?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
At this time, we have two resolutions that needed to, that came in just today and need to be added to the agenda. Could I have a motion please to add the additions to the agenda? Izetta and Linda? Discussion? All in favor? All right, this, this allows us to put these on the agenda. And now we come to the resolutions. There are two resolutions because Tina, did the public get this? No, because the public did not get this, I will read these. The first resolution is number one. Appoint Director of Business Operations and Finance, Madeline Winoski. Did I say that right? Renosky or Renosky?
Wisnowski.
Winosky, all right, thank you. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the North Rose Wilkens Central School District hereby appoints Madeline Winoski to a four-year probationary appointment as Business Director of Business Operations and Finance effective January 31, 2022, with such probationary period ending on January 30, 2026. A parentheses, a position in the Director of Business Operations and Finance tenure area. And be it further resolved that Madeline Winoski shall be supervised by the Superintendent of Schools and has met all the requirements to hold an internship certificate as a school district business leader by the Commissioner of Education and be it further resolved that the Board of Education approves the terms and conditions agreement for the Director of Business Operations and Finance effective January 31, 2022 and ending June 30, 2022. The second resolution is a letter of resignation, Catherine Welkley. Catherine Welkley, school nurse, has submitted a letter of resignation resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of the Schools and pursuant to education law, accepts the resignation of Catherine Welkley as school, as a school nurse effective January 13, 2022. Those are the two resolutions. May I have a motion please to approve these resolutions? Tina and Linda? Is there discussion? All in favor of approving the resolutions? Motion is carried. Now we move to good news. Paul, do you have good news? You always have good news. You're mute, you have to unmute, Paul.
Yeah, I do. So starting out with academic awards, or let's say acknowledgement. These are a couple of students from our school district that are on the dean's list at College. Samantha Sorio Ortiz is at the dean's list at Mansfield. Actually, the president's list, and it doesn't give me a grade point ratio for that, but typically a president's list is even higher than dean's list. And then Genevieve Bonner for the FLCC at dean's list. For hiring. Mike, are you smiling at that one? Also got some nice coverage in the Lakeshore News of our athletes. Of course, we got some good coverage on the capital project. That's pretty well behind us now. Well, actually it's in front of us, but the, the voting is behind us. Some season highlights and and this is just as, as good a possible news as I can bring because you know how the scholar athlete teams, we've all, are we all familiar with that now? We had five scholar athlete teams in the fall. Boys volleyball, girl soccer, boy soccer, boys cross country and girls cross country. And listen to this, the girls cross country average score, GPR, GPA was 99.51. How do you do that? Anyway, five teams. Lots of individual awards and I, I just really want to take the time to go through them. I'll, I'll, I'll go quickly, but Nolan Sears for boy soccer, first team, All County. JJ Wannick, second team, Gilbert Seeger, second team, AJ Anthony, second team. Lucine Macrow, second team. Lucas Crane, third team, Jack DeFeo and Nick Gilbert, all on the third team for, that's for boy soccer. Girl soccer, Riley Betzel, second team. Emigre Humbert, Lexi Countryman and Tori Cooper on the third team for All County. Girls volleyball. Haley Tapping, second team and Whitney Wilson, third team. Then the boys volleyball, Nolan Sears, again, first team, Finger Lakes All-Star and Chase Weber, second team. Girls tennis, Lily Bundy, second team and Kendra Belcorn, second team. So we got a lot of athletes doing really well. And I'm not even finished with athletes. Couple more exciting things. The wrestling team. Third place at Port Byron the past weekend. They also had a first place finish over at a Red Creek tournament. Jack DeFeo won the 600 meter last Friday at the league meet at RAT. Won the 600. And then Zachary Dero was the section five boys scholarship winner. So again, we got some athletes at our school just doing great. That's my good news. I know there's a grant, but I hope somebody else will cover that.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Someone else? Anyone else have good news they want to share?
Today, today on Facebook, there was a, an article, whatever, a presentation on our art program with our high school principal was two students. A real positive.
I will say too, that it was good news to watch the Rose Bowl parade and see a float the City of Hope that our own board member Linda Egner helped put those flowers in on that float. She worked on that along with with the Town of Rose supervisor who was in charge of the float. And of course Linda's husband, the supervisor from the town of Huron was there putting putting flowers into the, the float. And how many people were with you and on Linda from the, our area?
Well, there were nine people there. Five of them were classmates. Five of us were classmates from North Rose Wilkens. So a good time was had by all. We were really thrilled to be part of that particular float because the City of Hope is like St. Jude's. It does medical research and treatment for people suffering from cancer. But unlike St. Jude's, their age range goes from birth to whoever or whatever. And if you're not able to pay, you don't have to. So survivors were slated to ride on the float. But because of the massive number of people that are involved in watching the parade, at the last minute, they decided not to have them ride the float because of, you know, danger for them to be contracting COVID. But they were actually able to be present for the judging. So they were there and they found out that we won the past president's trophy for that float.
Yes, congratulations.
Experience and the theme of the parade was dealing with education and the three words were dream, believe, achieve, which I thought was real appropriate as a board member to be there. So I really enjoyed it.
Well, congratulations. That was a beautiful, beautiful float. All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's update.
So while Tina pulls up this slide, I just want to kind of touch base on three things tonight. You know, a lot of what we've talked about has already been covered throughout the agenda. So you know, first and foremost, you know, Paul referenced it in, in his good news, you know, Monday, the Finger Lakes Times reported, you know, on a federal grant that we received, you know, so we're pretty excited that the school district's receiving about. So we're pretty excited that the school district's receiving about nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, a little bit more, but I don't have the exact figure in front of me. It's going to continue to highlight the need for what we're doing in our Alternative Learning Center. So really pretty pleased with the people that operate our Alternative Learning Center every day. Kerry Merritt, Mel Sarah, Amy Plow, and Joyce Freeman. And tonight, you know, we appointed Caitlin Bowens. She's going to be joining that group as a teacher assistant in that program. We also have the benefit of a school district that works very well with the Wayne County Sheriff's Office. It's no secret that we have a very good rapport with them. We have three twelve-month school resource officers. So in order for us to expand upon our school within a school concept and really provide students that, you know, learn better in an alternative setting with more creative ways to stay in school and be successful, this grant's going to pick up some of the funding and really help us expand that program and really utilize the skill set that those individuals have to move the ball forward and create a safe learning environment for those students. And I don't mean just safe from physical harm. A lot of what you talked, or what we've heard talked about tonight from Kira at the beginning through the programs that the directors presented on was the social emotional learning. So we're really ecstatic that we were able to receive the grant. We're thrilled with the work that Bridget Bar, Megapoliotti, Sarah McLean have been able to push forward in securing that grant and also laying out the framework for what our future looks like with the Alternative Learning Center. So that's a fantastic thing that I really think the district and our residents should feel proud about. Next, want to move into the COVID update. COVID continues to be one of those areas where we have to navigate at will. Many of you know, I attended a webinar last week, Zoom call with the Secretary of Education for the United States, Surgeon General for the United States, and a member of the CDC, along with White House representatives. I was one fortunate enough to be one of a thousand educators across the country to attend that. And the goal really is to keep our students in school five days a week. You know, locally, we're continuing to navigate through the Omicron variant. It certainly hit our area and continues to grow our numbers. We sent home, take-home tests with all of our students last Thursday. You know, I think the staff are doing a remarkable job changing the course every day, whether it's our school nurses with treating symptoms, checking on students, administering tests, navigating the day-to-day operations that they field. Typically, they've had added responsibility with the COVID symptoms on top of it, whether it's our support staff behind the scenes, making sure that we're contact tracing, or the administrators are providing up-to-date information with who was in school and where students were. That continues to be a challenge, but I would say, by and large, we continue to deal with COVID situations case by case, class by class, and grade level by grade level. So I'm really proud of the work that the people are doing to make sure that our kids are in school five days a week as much as it's reasonably possible. You know, from time to time, we're going to continue to have to either push a grade-level remote, a class remote, or potentially, if we have a severe outbreak, even send a building remote. But we're prepared for that. So I think, you know, good things are in store. One thing I wish the directors would have taken the time to highlight tonight that I think they've done a fantastic job with is really work on contingency plans. You know, we've run through scenarios with each of them to say, okay, if this happens, how will we respond? One of those such scenarios is like if COVID hit our cafeteria staff in one particular building, would we be able to navigate? And in fact, that did happen, and we were able to pivot. And Rita and her staff were really ready, because we talked a week prior about the contingency planning that would be necessary to keep our district open, and we went to a central kitchen mode of operation. That same mindset is prevalent with both transportation and maintenance and operation. And it's also something that Lisa Brower and her department play an integral part with. As far as how we respond to COVID, I know there are plenty of people who like to criticize us, and they're entitled to their opinion. But I would say our district has done a fantastic job navigating and changing with the information. And I referenced Friday's webinar with the Secretary of Education, not to say, you know, that there weren't challenges that they recognized, but also to say, we're trying to get it from a federal, a state, and a local level and make sure that we're adhering to all the best practices. And since Friday's protocol meeting with the Wayne County Department of Health, that protocol has changed three times. And recently, as recent as about an hour and a half ago, I got some updates from the county director of the Department of Health, Diane Devlin, with some new algorithms that we're going to try to get out to our administrators tomorrow so that our community knows, hey, here are the symptoms. This is how we're going to respond, and this is how we move forward. So it continues to be a challenge, but I think that, again, it's something that's not just here at North Rose Wilka. It's everywhere. And my compliments to the team that are doing a really wonderful job. Lastly, for my superintendent's report, I just want to talk to the board and see if we can have a conversation, even if it's not tonight, about the Salt Barn Facility Study. You'll know in my communication with you a couple of weeks ago, the proposal that we're talking about is really something that we're really trying to work on more of a collective bargaining agreement in terms of how we purchase and how we provide services from both the municipality and a school district standpoint. So I'm really looking to move forward with the study. You know, we're trying to build goodwill and work with our local town supervisors and our highway superintendents on a more regular basis. The study that we're talking about specifically tonight would be to look at a joint operational center, a salt barn, with the town of Wilka, the village of Red Creek, and the Red Creek School District. So if we bring these four entities together, we're looking at opportunities to secure grant funding and also expand our purchasing power and try to benefit all of our constituents at the same time. And it's something that I would be welcome to talking with the town of Butler, the town of Huron, or the town of Rose with any type of opportunity like that, whether it's, you know, purchasing equipment, whether it's looking at, you know, mutual aid for one another. This particular study, the district would be responsible for about sixteen-hundred financial commitment to start the ball rolling in terms of studying the environmental impact, the feasibility, and whether or not it's something that would be as beneficial as we think right now. And we did have a meeting with the town of Wilka, the Wilka Highway Superintendent. Local Assemblyman Brian Kolb was there. The mayor of Red Creek and the superintendent of the Red Creek School District, as well as a few other representatives from the town. So in my opinion, it's something that would be feasible and sensible if we were to invest that money to pursue the study and let MRB Group out of Rochester go forward with everything that they need to do and then come back to us with more concrete data later in the spring to see if it is something that the school district wants to pursue. So with that said, I'll turn it over for any questions or any entertainment of thoughts on that particular topic, COVID or the Department of Justice grant.
Board members? Opinions?
So if we go ahead with the study, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You're okay. If we go ahead with the study, is this group going to be talking to the other towns in our school district? Or is this part of what they will be doing?
So right now, the planning is, we're in the infancy stage, but I don't see why we wouldn't expect that they come forward and talk to us, you know, once we get their data, or I report out to the school board and the community on the data of the findings and really solicit input as to whether we want to move forward with this particular project. You know, currently, we're going over to the town of South Butler to load our trucks up with salt. And, you know, whenever we talk about efficiencies and investment, you know, I want to look at both equipment and human resources, because there's an unintended consequence when our trucks are on the road and they're moving to, you know, Butler to go get loaded with salt, or whether they're, you know, off-site because they're loading the truck and thinking about how we capitalize on something that's in close proximity. We're very thankful for the town of Butler allowing us to go in for a cooperative purchase. This just gives us an idea of how we want to move forward without putting a salt barn on campus.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Anyone else? Linda, did you have something?
Well, I just wanted to say, it is good that we do have one township that's working with us, but our district does encompass several. So it's a good idea to pursue with other towns as well.
Yeah, and we've had that conversation. Cindy and I've met with the town supervisors to say, we want to continue to open the door, the communication and everything else. This particular proposal is a little bit more unique in the fact that, you know, Red Creek Central School District and the village of Red Creek are also here. And it's also something where it's kind of like that, that particular area that they're studying for the salt barn really is central to all the entities involved with this. But you're right, and that's something that, again, I think that the more we communicate with our towns and the more we work with our town supervisors, our highway superintendents, the better we are for all of our constituents. So I can't agree with you more.
Michael, is the location that you're considering, is that going to be closer than it would be in, say, South Butler?
You know, by my estimation, it's a little bit closer, yes. But I think in terms of geographically, I mean, if you look at where the town of Huron barns are located, the town of Butler barns are located, and the town of Wilka barns located currently, they're all within, you know, I would say, a fraction of a mile to where we are. So it's something where this particular barn, it's more of the the appeal for cooperative purchasing or cooperative bidding comes down to the Red Creek Village and the Red Creek Central School District. And this is something that I think, again, to Linda's point, we want to continue to explore the opportunities, because mutual aid, from the standpoint of working together to benefit our community and invest our money wisely, just saves our taxpayers all the way around. There are going to be times where we don't need a wood chipper. However, we don't need to purchase it, but we need to borrow it from one of the towns. And maybe there's a time where we go together to purchase vehicles and mass, and we get a better price. Or there's things that they have the ability to pave and, you know, seal, and we work to, you know, bid that out with them. So I think that this is really just, again, for the study, because we know ultimately, if we don't do something along these lines with one of the towns, you know, we're really going to have to look at putting something to that effect up, because, you know, if it takes two of our guys, two to three trips out of the school district per se, off our campus rather, probably is a better way to phrase it, off our campus, that we're not getting the most bang for our buck with our employees. You know, all those townships represent our district, but if they're not on, you know, Salzer Colvin, and they're not on New Hartford Street, or Draper Street, or Washington Street, then they're not salting our area. And, you know, they're actually around the townships. So proximity-wise, I think it's close, you know. But I think in terms of actually the study, it's something that I'm hoping that you guys had a chance to read through the proposal from MRB and would consider moving it forward, because, again, I think the risk here right now is minimal, but we do want to start socializing this type of approach more.
I agree. I agree.
I said it.
I had two comments. One, when you're talking about Red Creek, the village and the school, they are all still in the Wilka township. So they're all kind of, when you're dealing with the town supervisors, stuff like that, he covers that whole area. The other thing I wanted to say is, as a family having to deal with COVID this last week, not this week, but the week before, I had a granddaughter that was out of school all week. She brought home the testing kit Thursday night. By Thursday night, public health had said that they couldn't accept the test results from it. By Friday morning, she was able to go back to school. I don't know where it stands now, but as a parent, it was a nightmare. I can't imagine having to work with that all by myself. That's crazy.
Yeah, the challenges are clear, you know. We're navigating daily. People are spending a lot of time, you know, focused on keeping everyone healthy and making sure that, you know, we're able to provide them the high-quality instruction they deserve. But there's certainly stuff that takes place prior to teaching and learning that we've had to grow accustomed to over the last couple of years. And so, I mean, I can appreciate your sentiments wholeheartedly and then think about when we're doing that on a daily basis. And usually, with contact tracing, you're not just talking about, you know, two or three kids. You're talking about two or three dozen.
It's crazy.
Paul?
Yeah, I want to go back to the salt barn. Cindy, I'm not sure that I want to go on record as an official document here, but I did Google Maps to see how much further it would be. And what I came up with was three minutes, and I thought, three minutes? It's kind of insignificant. The other comment that I would make, though, on this whole idea is, I love it, because not only does it help us with the community, but it turns around the other way. It gets the community invested in our school district, which is one of the things I've been trying to do for three years. So I'm all for it.
Good, good. Okay.
Yeah, just Cindy, one last thing, because I think this is important to kick around. At some point, I would love to have some joint school board, town board meetings as well, you know, where we represent, even if it's one or two of us going to a town board meeting to kind of update the towns and the town supervisor of what's going on, and then invite them to present sometimes as well. Similar to the float, you know, there were a lot of people that you just mentioned that worked on that particular float, and it got national exposure. I think that's really what we're trying to go for in general. You know, continue to build goodwill with our residents, continue to do good things for our taxpayers, and continue to foster the same vision, because that really does come back to our strategic plan and those community promises. So I think that that's a piece that I just hope that we can talk about at some point in time.
Sounds good. Sounds good. The next item on our agenda is the Board Member Request Comments and Discussion. Jason had requested to be on the agenda, but he's unable to be with us tonight. So we will postpone his request until our next board meeting. Is there anyone else who wants to jump in on this? Title category? All right, then, before we adjourn, we have one last thing, and that is to go into executive session. We do need to go into executive session to discuss legal matter. And, but for those of you tuning in, we will not be coming back to do any business. We will only be coming back in session to adjourn. We will only be coming back in session to adjourn. So when you leave, you don't need to worry about coming back. At this time, could I have a motion, please, go into executive session to discuss a legal matter? Tina and John? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. So we'll say goodnight to those of you tuning in. Have a good rest of the evening.